Are you ready, Becky?
Ready.
Okay. Morning, Tyler. It is 9:00 AM. I will call this meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended. At or around 9:15, we will also be meeting as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again, abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, copy of which is at the entrance to this room. Opening prayer is our first item this morning, and Commissioner Wuller, would you lead us, please?
Yes, please join me. Dear Lord, on this Monday following Veterans Day, let us give extra thanks and appreciation to those past, present, and future who serve so that we can enjoy our freedoms and liberties. Time will never dim the glory of their deeds. Let us conduct ourselves in a manner deserving of their sacrifice. We also ask for your armor of protection for the many public servants who keep our county safe, secure, and functioning well. May they be treated with respect and grace by those that they encounter in their daily work. Father, please be their power and their protector. To you be all the glory, honor, and praise. Amen.
All right, thank you. Okay, next item is to approve minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on November 6, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioner meeting held on November 6, 2023.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call, please.
Wuller?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
The next item is to consider the following. First would be the claims and treasures receipts.
Hughley? I was talking to Becky, sorry.
Chairman, I would move to approve the claims and treasures receipts as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Weems?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Wuller?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
The next item is authorizing the chairman to sign the management representation letter to the Nebraska Auditor of Public Accounts for the county audit ending June 30, 2023. I believe you have that. Becky, is that correct?
Yes, I do.
Okay. We did have the exit interview with the auditors last Monday after our regular meeting. There were a number of smaller items that were brought up that I think we have addressed, and...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize you to sign the management representation letter for the accounts for the state ending June 30, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any clarification needed? Roll call, please.
Hughley? Weems?
Aye.
Wuller?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Okay, I go back to Becky.
Yeah, it looks funny. Used to be $3.87.
Yeah, nothing automotive related is cheap anymore.
Must drop the line or is it...
Director, they didn't probate it, or they probated it all, it's a $6 million estate.
Did you lock it?
I didn't lock it. Why do I lock my escape hatch?
When you squiggle. And I got a new, really sharp pen. Good morning, Nancy. How are you? How was your drive in? Beautiful. It's just right for me. Yeah. You took her to the Nebraska volleyball game? Oh, my goodness. Yeah, I understand the atmosphere in those games now has just become electric. Really? Nice. I've never been to one. Yeah, that was probably a pretty big day for her. Yeah. Um, for Predator?
I guess I would ask that we tell... I will do that.
Did you talk to Brandy? She sent me this, because remember... I thought that's the amount that she gave me. I thought that seemed like a lot. So she got to hold a sergeant handle this morning.
That's per the state auditor.
Yeah, I was going to put that in there, too.
Because when she told me, I said, whoa, that's a lot of money.
Cheap skate, I'm going to buy you a drink Friday.
No.
Bad funnel.
I wonder if I should...
Just him and MA here? Just him and MA come down, or did Doncic come take along?
Just him and his wife. Chit-chatted with Dwayne at her ding for a little while. Didn't stay long after the cake cutting. It was good to see them.
So when you rent a storage unit, it doesn't come with electricity?
I read that. I was going to say something like that, just pass it on. I thought that was probably as part of the rent, but evidently they build that separate...
Really? I mean, at least it's affordable, but I guess I just assumed it would come with the rent.
Okay, it is 9:15. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization. First item is approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on November 6, 2023.
Chairman, I would move to approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held 11/6/23.
Second.
The motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Weems?
Aye.
Wuller?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Next item is certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor. And we don't have any. That's two weeks in a row. Thank you. Great. Okay, any other, anything else to count before the Board of Equalization? Okay. So at 9:16, we will adjourn as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Thank you, Julian.
Down in North Platte, when I had my neighbor Lexi over at the sheriff's department owns one that she loaned to me. It's big business. Yeah, it's not bad at all throughout. I have crutches if you need those, though. I loaned my boot out several times around the neighborhood. Hard time about this. Hello?
He doesn't spin at all in one place.
Yeah. I'm sure he probably doesn't even pay the one, that big decent pickup, though. Must be somebody in the water. Or someone has it. No. Got changed.
Can't wait to get into it.
Aren't over with. I've been telling you long time for like four days.
For a reason.
Well, maybe, yes. I had it was 35. That's what it was. My mistake. Not the first one, not the last one. Lee, my apologies. I've been telling you the wrong time for your agenda item.
I had 9:35.
Oh, I had 9:25.
The first one was 9:35.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
I put it on mine incorrectly then.
I had 11:50, but you have.
Don't confuse me.
Better tomorrow.
You know, they ordered by ones for the building department. Machines. Surplus of the other. In the meantime, we have to keep doing this. On the old ones.
It is 9:30. Our next agenda item is to discuss and consider authorizing the chairman to sign a contract with Clery for the construction of a storage building for Region 51 Emergency Management.
We're going to do most of that. So as a part of the process of this special purchase, the county had to run notice in the paper at least five days before the board voted to make the special purchase. The intent of that is to give other interested parties the opportunity to make an informal quote if they want. If I'm not mistaken, somebody did stop down at the clerk's office and pick up the information, but we've received no additional quotes at this point. So what I would like the board to do is simply vote to accept the Clery quote and enter into a contract with them. It'll be our standard contract attaching their proposal. Something I would like the board to consider while it's doing this, though, is the payment bond. Statutorily required. Obviously, it's not in Clery's quote. I know the county has in the past picked up the cost for that, but that's something that the board probably wants to consider now rather than be springing it on them later.
Mm-hmm. So how do we proceed with that payment bond?
Well, that's amongst the five of you. And Joe can fill in any gaps here, because I know he's done this a few times, but I believe the county has picked up that cost before as part of the contract.
What kind of cost are we speaking of?
Usually pretty minimal.
I wouldn't think it'd be a couple of thousand dollars myself, but...
Couple of thousand, that's...
I mean, I might, I don't know. I mean, usually on... Are they erecting the building or not?
I believe they are.
Yeah, they are.
They are, okay.
They are.
Okay, they are.
They're not doing the concrete. They're subbing that out. But they are putting the building in, or would be.
Well, let's see. So we're talking performance and payment bond, and I'm going to go as Clery, so I'm going to, I'm going to do something in my head, so just bear with me, please. How much was the building?
$115,000.
$115,000.
I stick with what I said earlier.
What is the benefit of a payment bond to the county?
Keeps us in line with state law. Payment bond is required. We have to get that from the people that do this kind of work for us. The performance bond is simply for our benefit. They don't get the job done, there's a bond sitting there that we can get money against.
Ultimately, if you remember back, we received no bids on this original basic plan, design, none. The company in question had changed personnel, so they weren't even aware and didn't submit anything. And so I had Brandon go back and reassess the specs to make sure the specs fit what he needed for clearance on the door and all the rest of it. And so that was our building block to get back to this point again. And essentially, you know, you're looking at a fraction of what had come along for these other bids of $400,000. And in fairness, a lot.
On a clearly different, yeah, a lot different building.
So that's, you know, that needs to be said, but this basic plain Jane project, obviously, it wasn't any interest in it the first time around, so... You know, it fits the budget. It's not a complete package. We don't have, we haven't energized the building. We haven't stubbed in a water line. But those are two elements that, the way I envision it, that we can do time and material and stub those in to the pour. Pour the floor. You've already got your conduit in place that you can pull wire and run water line later. In other words, piecemeal it in. It fits the budget. We stay within our expenditure. We've got room to do those add-ons for the $150,000 budget. And so it's very appealing to me to finally put it in motion to get, get past this. We've rolled that money over now three times. And with the lid law, it's going to ding us if we don't put the building up. We're going to have to eat the whole thing on the lid. It's going to go against us. And I think it's a reasonable amount for what Brandon needs personally, but...
Am I understanding you to say that county picking up the payment bond would not be out of line?
I don't think it would be. Based on the entire budget we have, I was very pleased that we came up with a quote of this minimal cost. What things cost these days, it's pretty substantial to put a thin building. Just material alone has gone, as we all know, gone through it, so... I don't have really a dog in the fight, other than I've kind of advocated for building it frugally, and I think this does it. I'm not that passionate about it, but I do want to see that we get off the nut and either do it or scrap it. And I don't think you're going to get it built any cheaper than this.
I went back and revisited my file on our original conversation. And the estimate that we had gotten from Clery, probably, was that two years ago, was actually more than this estimate. It was $125,000. So this $115,000 for the same, for the same building seems very reasonable considering the construction environment.
And I frankly don't care who builds it.
Right.
I mean, like I said, as Tyler pointed out, you know, we welcome all interested parties, but there were none. Certainly on this price point, there doesn't seem to be a lot of appeal for a project like this. Did you have anything to add, Brandon?
No.
Nope.
We've had a lot of conversations with you on this building project.
Tyler, is that within the board's authority to accept this bid and pay the, and cover the expense of payment bond?
Well, I hope it is, because I'm going to make that motion.
Yeah, it is, and I forgot. Yes, somebody please make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have moved that we authorize you to sign the contract with Clery for the construction of a storage building for Region 51 Emergency Management. And as part of that contract, the deputy county attorney assists you putting language in there to require a performance and payment bond.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Morning, Tristan.
It's our timeframe that we're looking at. Like construction or contract?
Construction.
Now, I can't, but I'll find out. I assume the board would like some sort of rough schedule to be put into the contract.
Agreed. I think if we start now, we've got, should have sufficient time to get it completed in the fiscal year.
Brandon, I know you were working with Judy Clark at planning and zoning on getting all of that squared away. Since it had not been done in the past, do you know where we're at with that part of the process?
I have not heard that from her yet. So I'm going to try to get the date to see where...
I actually have a meeting scheduled with Judy right after Commissioners this morning, so we can have that conversation, too.
Okay. So when we come up with that contract, can we get some direction as to what their construction timetable might look like?
I will make sure there's something in it to that effect.
It sounds great. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Thank you very much, all involved in that process. Okay, our next agenda item is to discuss and consider change order request for the 111 North Dewey Project, the probation office remodel. So this would be an item that you wanted on the agenda, Commissioner Woodruff?
Yes, I asked for this to be put on the agenda, and Lee Davies is going to come up and speak to us.
Would you please sign in and state your name for us, please?
Uh, Lee Davies.
Becky, you already have one of these here. I think I need one back.
Okay, as I understand it, Lee, you have had discussions with Tyler Volkmann in charge to this change order. Would you kindly tell us what is involved in this and what has led us to this stage?
As far as some of the work, the, let's start with change order one, the hidden power lighting circuit modified. Basically, what was found, there was several rooms that had carpet in them that had floor boxes that were not in, you know, obviously could not be seen because they weren't in, they were just covered up. There was this wiring that was not only run in the floor, but also just along the floor underneath carpet and several locations where they were running lights off that. So there was some additional wiring, additional work for them to redo that areas.
Were you using a little carpet conduit, huh?
Yeah, pretty much. It's kind of, yeah. Not even conduit, it was just wiring.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it was just, yeah, carpet was the conduit. So there were several locations where that had taken place and worked hard the additional work for that. They were looking, we were going through that. There was also areas where they were trying to look to where they could do areas that they could reduce the cost of that. So the trade-off went back and forth as far as cost was, but in the end, it ended up being additional work. Item number two is a, again, some areas of work that had some extensive floor cracks and some extensive work. I think you ground out some, quite a bit of concrete to make sure that it wouldn't transfer into the new flooring that was going down over, so it would be a smooth transition. And then the third item on that was, would be a deduct from Downhaur cleaning that was done by the county.
Okay, so the first item, which is the largest one, of $6,400 and 10 cents. What was involved in that particular work?
Most of that work was based hourly work, it looks like, as far as from the electricians. What was dealt, what was done was that was additional work where they had to figure out circuitry. There was a lot of existing light fixtures that were tagged on to, I guess is the word, not tagged on, but connected on to outlets and ran up, and that was in combination of some of the flooring items. So some of the work was done with that, is the way it was explained to me. So they had to change some of the existing wiring. Some of the existing wiring also was short and wasn't able to reach the new fixtures, connections. So they had to rewire some of that existing stuff. So it was work that was legitimate and needed to be done, and it was added value to the project, nothing that they over exceeded, but it was work that would have to be done that was unforeseen prior to, without having to go through and just starting pulling and running circuitry.
Was this wiring, you know, that was an old building, was the wiring even up to code?
That was some, that was a lot of it. It was, they were meeting codes on a lot of stuff and fixing stuff that, you know, maybe were unforeseen. And, you know, there had been a lot of, I think, you know, early on, before we even started the project, they went through and said there's plenty of power to the building, but I, and there was power that was added, but I think there was some locations where the power was just, it was added, but maybe not correctly. For example, the way they just threw wiring under carpet and ran it. So a lot of that was all pulled out and replaced and put back in, just to make it so it would meet code. I know a lot of it was, you know, when the, you know, not always there when, you know, when the electrical inspector comes through, but I think a lot of it was in combination of the electrician on the job site and the electrical inspector saying, hey, you need to do this to make it meet code.
Okay, can, I'm looking at these change orders. They're dated from Downhaur Construction back in July. And then the one that's positive to the county, a deduct of their cost in August. I suppose, I mean, probation's moved into the building. Why are we just now seeing this come before us? That's the question I have.
We looked at this. They were, they still hadn't finished the work completely. And some of this work that they had looked at with the carpeting and that kind of stuff wasn't really done until about the second week of September.
But it's the middle of November. I guess I'm not understanding why this is just now coming before us, and it wasn't before. Legally, can we pay for this? Legally, can we pay for this?
Just got done.
All right.
It's a combination of that and at least two commissioners sat here and heard what the auditor's office had to say about things that were a little late. They're not so concerned about it as I am, so.
All right.
As long as the work's been done within 90 days.
So Chris, I'll, I'll speak to that. We had several meetings with Kent, the entire crew, when we realized that work had been done without submitting a change order ahead of time, following proper procedure. So Lee and I have had several conversations with Tyler to get his advice on how to proceed with this. We sent all of the submitted paperwork back to Dowhauer's and asked for more detail and more explanation. We had several walkthroughs. Probation went ahead and moved into the building without all of the work completed, and so they probably continued to work in there for possibly two or three weeks after we moved in because we wanted to avoid paying another month's rent in the building that we were renting, so.
It was actually almost a month after.
Almost a month after.
Because I've got, I had looked at an email yesterday that said that they would be in there the following week, and that was in the first week in September, so they came in there and finished up their work in the second week, second or third week of September.
I might say that's not all that unusual to have a substantial completion, depending on the size of the project, up to two, three months before the final completion because there's just, there's things that get, need to get done, but substantial completion, it can be occupied, used for its intended use, so. I, I'm not saying this is the case here, I'm saying it would not be unusual for.
Yeah, that's pretty much what, you're explaining exactly what pretty much happened. We substantially completed the building, they were able to move in, so they could get moved out and not pay an extra month and get moved in there, and then, as, you know, they knew there were some items that they had to deal with.
But, but I, to Kent's, or to Chris's question, it looks like the, your change order is October 1.
Yes.
That's, that was my question, it's, it's been a little time, but, you know, the work was done, probably needs to be paid.
Well, and, and Lee and I had a couple of meetings with Tyler because we wanted to make sure, and then Lee was, Lee was out of town a couple of Mondays.
The last two Mondays, I couldn't make it, so.
Okay, I'm with you.
We are a month and change past when he submitted this to me originally.
Gotcha.
We just couldn't get everybody together, unfortunately.
Kayla, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't want to misstate this, but essentially, a work order was not put in place when it should have been.
A work order was not put in place. The young man performing the work did not communicate with his supervisors, and they were unaware that he was doing necessary work, but work that was not in the original bid.
I'm not disputing, just clarifying that.
Yes.
That change order was not before us, like it should have been.
It was not before us.
Okay, so moving on.
Per procedure.
To the comments about the timeline and the auditor, the chairman and I sat in on the audit exit, and this, not this particular item, but in general, this issue comes along, you know, time and again. This is too, this is too far out, and the statute's very clear, as counsel says. However, as he also alluded to, the auditor has a little bit more of a view at present day that a practical approach is okay with them. In other words, if it's a legitimate thing, and we've exceeded, and if you can split hairs, well, the last change order was October, August, whatever, but they essentially conveyed to us on that exit interview, moving forward, that if you have an instance like this, you want to make it an exception, not a rule, and you want to take people to task over it and say, don't do this again, but they're okay with paying that, to Joe's point about it's a legitimate change order, whatever. So that's kind of where we're at, and I, I. Was it done right? No, but it was, it was work legitimately done and to complete the project.
And, and I believe that all of the contractors, the subcontractors were adamant about using this as a learning experience for their young employees, so.
Let's hope, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we have before us this change order, which comes to a total of $6,694.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion, if I can find it somewhere. We authorize you to chime change order number. Oh, one. Not like we've had a lot of change orders. That's pretty unusual in itself.
You know, I was.
Sign change order number one in the amount of $6,694.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Joe, to that, to that point, we were pretty proud of ourselves for making it through this process. I mean, that was a long process from start to finish without a change order, so when this came up, nobody was more disappointed than Lee and I.
Especially renovation work, that's pretty, that's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Lee, I want to thank you for the work that you did on this project to help us get through this. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Thanks again.
Thank you, Lee.
You bet.
Guys, have a good day.
You, too.
Now, you will need, Lee, looks like you'll need to sign this form right here.
And they will submit that as an invoice next week, then, or this week?
Yes, I can, yes.
We would like, that's our, that's our loose end that I spoke to a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, I'll just give them a call right now.
The project should be, put a bow on it.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and consider school resource office, resources officer funding. Sirs, would you come forward and state your name, sign in for us, please?
Derek Hannah.
Dan Newton, from the sheriff's office.
Good morning.
Good morning. Tell me what we are discussing here about funding for our school resource officer.
Also with us today is Amanda Hibner, principal with Sutherland Public Schools, and Brandy Busher, the, a board member for Sutherland Public Schools, and Sheriff Kramer.
Yeah. That was very good of you.
So to give you a little bit of a history, back in 2016, the sheriff's office allowed me to go to the I Love You Guys Foundation School Safety Symposium at Columbine High School, and over the last seven years, I've worked as the school safety liaison with all the area village schools on their safety teams. We have quarterly meetings to discuss things of concern with the school buildings on each school. Through those meetings, over the last five years, we've spoke a lot about the school resource officer programs and if we wanted to implement those within the schools in Lincoln County. A lot of the times, through those meetings, it always just came down to funding, and we just kind of benched those talks to the next meeting, and then we bring it back up again. We've had a lot of guys talk with the schools. Sutherland has been the most proactive in those meetings. Through those meetings, just recently in 2023, Ms. Busher told me about a grant through the cops hiring program for new officers for community policing and the SRO programs. That was just at the end of April, had a deadline of May 17th to complete a grant, to see if we can get awarded any funds through that. Through that grant, it was 80% of new hire wages up to $125,000 over three years.
Much 125?
125, split over three years. I got the, I met the timeline, got the grant submitted, and it sat there for months and months and months. And so I was like, well, I was kind of discouraged that we weren't going to get any of the funding. Until recently, November 2nd, we did get awarded the grant. It's in the pre-award stage. We have until December 16th to notify the cops hiring program if we want to accept the funds or not. Okay? There's a lot of planning that still needs to be done in this, a lot of contractual obligations through the school, our office, and a lot of questions that we still have as we haven't really applied for a grant like this ever at the agency, to know what the ins or outs are about the funding. Our question today is kind of if we can get maybe a commissioner on a committee along with Mr. Volkmur to kind of give us a little bit of guidance on how to move forward before we decide if we want to go forward with this or not, so.
Okay. I'm going to be the, this is my favorite role. The board, by statute, sets the number of deputies, okay? So my first question to the sheriff is, sheriff, what is your full staff? What is, what is the number of deputies you have when you feel like you're fully staffed?
25.
25, that's what I have written down, so thank you for the answer, you already know. And are we short some deputies now? Or I'll, I'll ask the lieutenant if that's okay, sheriff.
Sure.
Are we short some deputies?
We are.
And I think I know that number, but could you say how many deputies were short at this time?
We're five deputies short, we're really hindered on, we can only get two into the academy at a time, so the academies start with full classes. We have two spots reserved this January, we can't hire two more until late in the spring, and then.
And those, those individuals still have to be accepted by the academy.
That's correct.
And to go through the academy. I will rest my point.
Just clarifying, the grant pays up to 80%?
That's what we could request, although the actual three years of funding for a deputy, actually, the 125,000 hits just under 70%, though. We could ask 80% up to 125.
Who pays the difference?
So that's, that's the contractual agreement that we would have with Sutherland Schools. I know with Brandy Busher, she's, she works very closely with the SROs through North Platte Public Schools. The North Platte Police Department, who has three officers, Public Schools pays 75% of that officer's wage, and the police department has to pick up the rest of it. With that, the, the deputy would actually be used by the sheriff's office during the summer months, which is like the busiest time, most calls for service, so for those summer months, we would use a deputy as a sheriff's office on regular patrol, and then during the school year, they would go back into the schools to do the SRO program, that's why Sutherland Schools would pay that partial wage to that deputy.
Okay, so the grant lasts for three years, what happens when the grant runs out?
Something we'll have to do with planning with the sheriff's office to fund budget-wise, and see if we can do that in the future.
So we're looking at Sutherland Schools, but what happens if another village says, hey, what about us? Maxwell wants a resource officer, or Brady, or Wallace?
We expect that to happen.
We do expect that to happen.
I would expect that to happen, too. I'm just curious as to.
They've kind of not participated with us in the talks in the past, so right now, the only one that wants to participate is Sutherland School, and they're in agreements to try and get an SRO into their school, so.
I understand.
At this time, we're just.
I, I understand that they haven't participated in discussions in the past, but that they, Sutherland gets a resource officer, all of a sudden, that changes the dynamic on who wants to participate in this. I don't know, I, I'm all for the, the safety in the schools, I'm just curious, is there other avenues that we could be taking as far as potentially training staff in the schools? Seeing if there's, if there's somebody willing to go through a training course that would not be at the exorbitant cost of bringing on additional deputies. Not saying that it's not worth the cost of bringing on deputies, don't, don't misunderstand what I'm saying.
The schools can speak for themselves, but I personally have been sent to a call at a school in the West where their staff were not allowed to intervene on a male subject that was throwing chairs through side lights into a classroom. They could not physically intervene for their policies, literally waited for me and Sergeant Nelmes to drive 13 miles at high speed to get there and control the situation, so I, there is a need, I'm not sure how much the school could do.
Well, that, that's just a change of their policies, I mean, if they're wanting.
Can I speak to that?
By all means, if you want to come forward.
Please, come forward, state your name and sign in for us, please. Okay, please.
Amanda Hibner, I'm the high school principal in Sutherland, and speaking towards school personnel being trained, their legalities, we just can't. So it's not easy to say, you know what, let's just train school personnel, because we have our own guidelines set by the state, saying that we cannot intervene. That's why we have to wait, we have protocols, we have to wait for law enforcement to step in, so it's impossible to train staff to step in. There's a certain amount we can do, yes, we can try and subdue, we can go through our I Love You Guys protocols, which is where we now secure. We do have our own rules, but bottom line is, we cannot interfere, we have to wait for law enforcement, we can't just train, and that is a state guideline, it's not just a local policy.
Amanda, are you not allowed, though, I think that you are in the state of Nebraska, to employ outside security personnel?
To hire an outside company?
Yes.
We could, we would have to change policies, yes, so we could hire.
Right, that's a local policy, yeah. Because I know other schools that do that.
Well, there's state policies also.
Yeah, right. So that, that was one, that's another thing that you, you might want to look at is, you know, don't think that I'm not for schools. I've been here a long time, and I'm, and in fact, I have a, an endowment for an officer that was a dare officer that we still have a bunch of funds in that I started. So when it comes to safety in schools and stuff like that, I get it. But my first responsibility on this side of the table is to the people in Lincoln County when it comes to law enforcement for the general public. And when we have a hard time maintaining our level of people that I think that we need, that's, that's my only concern. That is my only concern, and I have a real concern about that right now.
Can I touch on another area also? Do you all understand what the role of a school resource officer would be, because it's more just intervening when there's a safety concern? I'm sure Mrs. Busher could expand more than I can, but it's, we keep referring to the safety, which, yes, that is our primary focus, but it's more than that. It's, we are pulling them off every single day off the, well, not every day, but probably three times a week, they come to Sutherland to help us, because it's more than just a safety, there's safety concern, it's also whenever we have reports of child abuse, when there are reports of neglect, we have to call and report it, and then they have to come and report, and it takes hours and hours and hours. So when you only have a couple of guys per shift and we're pulling them off or something like that, that does leave maybe one guy out in the field or two, depending on the shift, available, but Sutherland takes up a good chunk of your officers now.
We realize that.
Because we have a huge need. Brandy, do you want to expand more on the role of an SRO, because I feel like that's getting lost in.
And Brandy, are you representing North Platte Public Schools?
Well, I can.
Please, please state your name, please, for us.
Brandy Busher. I am on the school board for Sutherland, and I also work for North Platte Public Schools, so I can kind of represent both, I suppose. For, for us, I think the value of our SROs, and I actually want to touch on a few things, one is sustainability, you brought that up, and I do have a few ideas on that, but our school resource officers really do not break up fights so much in our building. Our staff can break up a fight, and they will. Our school resource officers are there for students, they are a resource for students. If a student is in a tough spot, they're a person in the building they can talk to and they can trust, and it's someone who can actually really help them get out of that situation. Most of our school resource officer calls are for child abuse. It's a much quicker response time than if we call Health and Human Services. Sometimes we may wait three or four days for, for a response. With our SRO, they can talk to that student quickly and make a determination if they need to go to the Bridge of Hope or need additional services. We also, one of the things I had discussed a little bit this morning is with Deputy Hannah is the professional development that our SROs provide to our staff, mandatory reporting training, drug recognition training, there's a lot of ongoing professional. There's a lot of ongoing professional development that can be done. I think there's a potential funding source when you start talking about professional development. Preventative programming. Currently, Lincoln County does not do DARE. I don't know that DARE has to be the program, but doing a drug and alcohol prevention program within the schools, I think you could find some ongoing funding to support that as well. The other thing I thought about when you talked about the other schools not being on board or wanting to jump on board, I don't know that that's a bad idea to an extent if everybody could kind of split that cost of an SRO and a schedule would be built that in, on this day, they're in that building. Logistically, there's still going to be some things that are going to happen if the SROs in Sutherland and Maxwell has a call, then obviously that would be someone else. But you could rotate, and at least the schools who wanted to participate or contribute could have that officer in their building, even if it is for one or two days a week, which is still a huge support. So I do think there's some additional funding sources, and we would have a couple of years to kind of try to figure that out as well.
Brandy, I apologize. I did try to return your call. I don't know.
Oh, that's okay.
I left a message. I just, by the time I got home, it was late, so.
Yeah. I just wanted to give the background of the value of what a school resource...
You don't have to sell me on a value.
It's a law enforcement...
I'm good friends with Officer Johnson. I understand what they do.
You're a great job.
And he does a great job. The program does have value. My concern chiefly is, in line with Commissioner Hughley's, we're down five countywide right now, and the sustainability aspect of it is another huge piece. And bringing on deputies to do this, not knowing what's going to happen in three years, and oh, we'll figure it out, well, the funding, programs like this, they do go away. And we just went through a tight budget cycle. Sutherland Schools just went through a tight budget cycle. I have a lot of questions on this. I mean, I would not be opposed to a commissioner and possibly the deputy county attorney exploring options potentially, but things would have to be buttoned down really tight before I could get behind this from a fiscal aspect.
Deputy Hannah?
Yeah.
Those funds would be utilized for officers only? Could retired military or ex-military or retired police officers be eligible for those funds, or is it just deputies on duty?
So the funding doesn't actually pay for the SRO. Usually, the SRO would be picked out of one of ours already currently a deputy. It is to help replace that position, so it's for an entry-level position. That's what the funding is based off of, is hiring the new deputy who is placed into the SRO program. So right there, I don't know that retired could not do it. That's another thing with retired that I'd like to talk about and see how we would...
Trust me, I would like to hire any good deputy I could, regardless of the funding right now.
So then the follow-on question I would have is, if this is going toward salaries or replacement, who pays for the vehicles? Who pays for the equipment that's going to be necessary to bring on this additional staff?
And that's what we have to decide through the sheriff's office funding it. I didn't apply for equipment and salary. This grant only went with equipment or salary. So we have to figure out through their contribution, through Sutherland School, it comes into us or through the county, how much that covers of the equipment that we'd have to pay for this new deputy and see where, what the difference is there.
Derek, I was on a school board thirty-eight years ago, so I come with a little bit of skeptical eye as well, because I saw a lot of things come before our little school board. Oh, we'll fund it, you put it in place, well, then we own it. And to the point about the lack of manpower, it kind of changes the dynamic of restaffing your sheriff's office. And it's certainly a noble program. Who would be against security in the school? But you have to look down the road two and three years and say, where are we going to be and what are we going to do? How are we going to fund this? Those are hard questions. And like it or not, as Chris just said, we went through a terrible budget cycle, and we had to eat a lot of expense, cut some programs. It's not fun to do, but bottom line is, each year, we're going to have, we have to balance that budget, and all these have to be weighed in, and I'd be interested moving forward. I think it's a very noble effort and something that does warrant a lot of discussion, but I would like to hear more from the sheriff moving forward as well, as he's reflected upon this as far as the manpower demand and where he's at with staffing and that type of thing.
You know, and I think another interesting thing that we touched on is some recently-retired sheriff's personnel or law enforcement personnel that serve on the Nebraska Crime Commission, and most all of those people, unless there's a very good reason, are still currently certified as peace officers. So certainly, any of those individuals might enjoy doing something like that. I mean, it's a noble cause, and working with the kids, very rewarding.
But you did say that the funding was for police officers exclusively?
Entry-level.
Entry-level.
And that's what we based the request of their wage to the COPS program, is what we're requesting. I think it came up to like $180,000 and some change to cover those three years of entry level. So that's then they, that's where they based that $125,000 or eighty percent of that wage off of, was the entry-level wage.
Does a school...
For the wages.
Yes.
Not the truck, not the radios, the weapon, I mean, the uniform. All that stuff does need to be taken into account as far as this conversation is concerned.
Does a school resource officer only work in the school? If there's an emergency situation and there's a resource officer in the Sutherland School, are they allowed to leave the school and go deal with that?
Some of the conversations we'll have to have with contract. You have to get into, you know, we've always had that scenario of the bank in Sutherland, which is one block away, is getting robbed. Does that SRO run down there and try and stop that? Well, you have to take into account that school resource officer needs to sometimes button down the school and put them into a either secure or lockdown due to the close proximity of what's going on. So there will be a lot of scenario-based type stuff where what the immediate need of that SRO is if they do need to leave the school or not.
And then what happens to a school resource officer when Christmas vacation and summer vacation?
So summer vacation, that's what I, that's why we carry twenty-five percent of the wage, is because they will come back out to the street, we'll utilize them within the county for taking calls, and then contractual stuff with holidays and things like that, they probably won't be working on those days. I don't know, though. Depending on where that falls in the percentage of what the school is using them for, we might go to use them on a holiday.
So did I understand you to say that you had to decide whether you're going to accept this fund or not by December 16th? Is that correct?
Yep.
So it looks to me like, colleagues, help me on this, do we put together a ad hoc committee to discuss this further, or can we make a decision today?
I would like to talk about it a little bit further. I don't want to put the county behind or our office or the Sutherland Schools. It's just, this is how, this is the closest we've got to implementing the process, and I'd like to continue talking about it. Even if we can't get everything worked out, at least we know where to move forward off of it, but I don't want to shoot it down when we're so close to actually having some extra funds that we might be able to supplement.
Sergeant, without putting the sheriff in a tough position, this call is going to come down a lot on administration in the sheriff's office, whether you like it or not. Okay? Kind of the buck stops here. Yeah, we determine the number of deputies. We do, okay? But I don't mind somebody talking, but, and I understand where the FOP is, okay? I get all of this, but please understand where I'm coming from, from my responsibilities to people in Lincoln County and the number of deputies we have, and that we're barely doing the coffee pickin' job now. And I hats off to the sheriff for doing it with what he has.
I would also encourage you to look at data. You're saying you represent the county. Well, Sutherland is part of your county, and if you have an entire community saying there's a need, I think we need to recognize and listen to it, so there's...
We also have...
But that's a specific, that's a specific group. I'm talking the county as a whole. I can't put one in every bank or every school. That's what I'm saying.
Go ahead. It's our meeting.
I understand that, but you also have a duty to listen to constituents as well. I'm speaking on behalf of Sutherland, saying there is an identified need, so I'm just asking you to look at the data and listen. That's all I'm asking for.
May I speak now?
Sure.
Okay.
It's your meeting.
We also see the data every year. Come June, when we have people in here protesting their property tax valuations, complaining about their tax rate. Granted, valuations, which we've tried to explain are only one part of the equation. We've done a really good job of not raising the tax rate, but there is a strong public opinion not to raise taxes in this county. And I don't know how we move forward without raising taxes if we adopt a program like this. I just don't. So I'm fine with maybe the law, the law enforcement committee having further conversation on this, but I would want the sheriff as part of those conversations completely.
First thing I need to do is apologize for speaking over you. I was wrong.
Thank you.
I was very wrong, and I do sincerely apologize.
Thank you.
Okay.
I would support what you just said and understand that even if in December the county agrees to accept this and we can't get it to work, we always send the money back. It doesn't touch us.
We can de-oblige grants.
We truly, we don't know what we don't know. That's why we're here. I don't know the mechanics of running something like this through the sheriff's office budget, because it's going to touch us. You're correct. It's going to touch us big time. I would like to continue the conversation with people in the know, which is why we're here.
Okay. So with that in mind, who do we have on that committee?
I believe it's...
Is that Kent and Joe?
Correct.
Kent, you chime in here, but it sounds to me like discussions with the sheriff and his representatives might be...
Oh, that's fair.
Might be appropriate.
That's a fair approach, I would say.
And get back...
Commissioner. I want the sheriff to weigh in on this.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to see how, I mean, he's obviously had a little bit of time to reflect, correct? Would you like to speak to it now?
Well, a little bit. If I might offer a suggestion, it might be to let them move forward with accepting the grant, because we can turn it back. That way, we're not up against the timeline for the whatever, fifteenth of December or whatever, because there's too much to work out between now and then. But if we have the money secured and we can figure out a way to make this work between now and next August, we'll have to address this right away. We can have the money secured and see how it works out. Logistically, it's going to be difficult. We know that at this point. We're not down five now. We're down six if we go forward with this. And we can only get them to the academy two at a time. That means first of May and again, first of August. So we're not looking at being fully staffed if we don't lose any more until next January.
And if those two can get accepted in the academy.
Exactly. And we don't lose any more. So there are too many variables to come up with anything conclusive at this point, but we could take the money and set it aside and start working on it. As they said, there are some other resources for maybe some more grants. By the time you figure the school's going to kick in there seventy-five percent, that gets you up over $200,000 and some for the three years, and no promises after that, because we don't know what's going to be available for money from the county, so.
So Sheriff Kramer, if we're down five deputies or six, we have funding already set aside to cover those positions?
Yeah, their salaries are in my budget, and so, you know, that's another thing that I thought of, too, is is there some money there? Because I said this fiscal year, that money's never going to be spent, because I just don't have the employees to spend it on. That's salaries and benefits, so that line item's going to look, I'm sorry, good by the end of the year.
I suppose, I mean, if the grant goes away, we have deputies hired.
Right.
They're just deputies.
There are positives to it, I think, if we look at it from multiple angles. I mean, it may be, it's my impression, just for the little bit of contact I've had with Officer Johnson, he loves his job, and maybe it's a recruiting tool that the, yes.
Exactly.
Yeah. So if, you know, it might benefit all parties.
I think also if the grant runs out, I mean, you're talking about a shortage, I think there probably would be space for that officer to go back and work just, you know, doing what they all do during the day, but if you, that officer is going to go back and being highly trained on how to work with kids, being highly trained on school procedures and policies, and they will still be a resource whether they're in a school or not. Whoever, if we get this funding, whoever that person is, even if they're not in the school, would still be a valuable resource to all of Lincoln County.
Okay. Well, it's a great discussion, and Sheriff, thank you for your input.
One last question. This grant, state grant or federal grant?
Federal.
Do we know the red, the strings that are tied? Have we looked into all that?
I have the rules listed out, what they have provided so far, and that's why I have this request, maybe tie it up with us to, it is through the U.S. Department of Justice.
Wouldn't it make more sense, I mean, we have over a month, right? Wouldn't it make more sense to get together ASAP with whatever group we need to and try to have some serious, substantial meetings before we okay this grant today without knowing?
I think that's a great approach, and as Sheriff mentioned, we could accept the funds, and they can be turned back if need be.
In a month. I think Joe's asking.
No, why don't we just wait a month and have these meetings without accepting them, and then we still have a month. We don't have to do this today. That was my thing.
Okay, that's where I'm going. So let's have that ad hoc committee, you two gentlemen, sheriff, and you two gentlemen as well.
And I would like the school.
School involved as well. Can we work on that?
Yeah. I have a question for, leaves my tiny thought process. Derek, make a note, within those regs, you talked about protocol, which is very important, prioritization, you know, what's the protocol? SRO, and the bank gets robbed, your example. So then the next question is, with a five-staff inequity, if dire straits come along and circumstances such, we have to pull that SRO, does that put the funding at risk if they're away from that obligation for X amount of days, or if that would, you know, if that would somehow define, whether we comply? That's a key question, maybe, to think about.
I think that would work a little bit more towards the contract with them.
Right, okay.
The school years.
But I don't want the federal grant to say, oh, well, they were paid for twenty percent of the time, so therefore you've violated the contract with us for the grant. That's what I'm getting at.
The Department of Justice, it was a community policing slash SRO program that's geared towards having cops with community relations, so the SRO is part of that. So I don't think there would be any...
Wouldn't think there'd be an issue? Okay, that'd be good.
It does not necessarily say this funding has to be used for SRO, it just needed to be, that's what we requested, and a portion of it.
Okay, good to know. Well, that's something we can hash through, I guess, right?
Okay, so who's going to be the lead on this, setting up the timeframe, setting up the...
I'm available today, and whenever you guys want to set a meeting, I'll be there, period.
Kent, you want to be the lead on this?
I think probably our sheriff or...
Lieutenant Dan, you look like, you look like the guy.
Well, they know, they understand all the things we don't.
Okay, so you set up this first conference, okay?
A couple of times, it worked for everybody and a lot of stuff.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you all for coming and being... Thank you all for coming and being with us. Appreciate your interest. And do not leave this room thinking that anybody at this table thinks that schools and other places of high public attendance do not need protection.
Most important places.
We just need to figure out how to get it done. Okay?
Amanda, please know I'm sincere on that apology. I feel bad about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. Look forward to hearing back what we come up with then. Okay, next item on our agenda is discuss and consider adopting a resolution authorizing the sale of real property to the village of Sutherland as published in the North Platte Telegraph on October 5, 2023.
All right. Continuing with the theme of Sutherland this morning. This is one of the last steps in a long-running saga of the county attempting to transfer some property to the village of Sutherland for their uses. What I have done now is we published the statutorily required notice in the Telegraph. That has run, well, at least 30 days at this point, closer to 45. That provided the public notice of the county's intent to sell this land. This is simply the resolution that the board is going to sign, taking some normal action to sell the land to the village of Sutherland. The price in there is noted as $1. So note for the record that I am making money. What will happen after this is it'll get sent over to the village once their board signs off on accepting the property or purchasing it. I will draw up a quick claim deed. I will insert the legal descriptions as attached to this resolution because those are the ones given to me by the county surveyor. And then we will complete the process.
And this is for the right of way to the water tower. Is that correct?
And some other property, yes.
And some other property.
It is all the property up there that the county owns.
Okay. Excuse me, that was Resolution 2023-32. Okay. Thank you for your work on this.
You thank me when it's done.
We're getting close. Colleagues.
What was the resolution?
20.
32.
32.
32.
32.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution 2023-32 authorizing the sale of real property to the village of Sutherland as published in the North Platte Telegraph on October 5, 2023.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Burns.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Wulker.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Joe, you need to start the signature process if you would.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Next item is discuss and consider interlocal agreement with Sutherland Public School District 55 for transportation services.
Also my agenda item, something substantially similar to this was before the board, I believe, last week. Having sent that on to Sutherland Public Schools, they reviewed it, had their attorney review it. They requested a provision specifically for if they pick up a student north of the river who is mobility challenged, in which case that would require sending a specialized vehicle to get them. If we could then revisit the agreement. I felt the agreement was open to revision without additional provision, but I added one in anyway. It simply says that if they take on such a student, the county and the school district will revisit this agreement so that we can keep with the spirit and intent.
Okay.
That's all that was added.
And of the four students, that currently is not a.
Correct.
Need, but in the future, if that should arise.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and there's not any implied liability or anything like that while that student's on this bus or anything since we have an agreement or.
None that we're taking, we're not taking, I don't believe we're taking on any additional liability, simply by assisting in the funding.
Thank you.
Okay. So this is an interlocal agreement that requires signatures from this board, Board of Education and County Clerk, and Deputy Lincoln County Attorney.
I think it's just the chairman.
This one's just set up for yours.
Just the chairman's.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize your signature and pass the interlocal agreement with Sutherland Public Schools District 55 for transportation services.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Since the other interlocal from the prior week was never executed by the school district, it simply ceases to exist. It never went into effect.
Okay, super. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Burns.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Wulker.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Do we have that? Interlocal agreement.
Probably. Yeah, we, yeah, open it up for Jerry's eyes.
There you go.
Next agenda item is discuss the RFQ or RFP for the multimodal transportation project. Commissioner Brunz, you had asked for this on the agenda. Would you care to start that discussion?
Mr. Chairman, we had a meeting this last week. I invite Judy to come forward.
Judy Clark, would you come forward, please?
At least anybody has any questions for Judy. Judy has done a fantastic job of crafting the structure of this document. Commissioner Hughley, myself, Jason Schultz, and Judy, we met and discussed what this should look like. And in that conversation, we, we provided a lot of input. All, all of us put a lot of input into this. I think we've got a good document here to work off of. It's kind of still a living, breathing document, if you will. Judy, I'll let Judy speak to the work that she's done as far as talking to some other entities to get rough ballpark estimates on, on costs. And that information is gonna probably dictate how we move forward a little bit with this. So Judy, if you want to speak to that real quick.
Okay. So in front of you, you have kind of just a draft proposal, and this can go a lot of different ways. The way this feasibility study, and that's all this would be, is a feasibility study. It was put together pretty, with a, with a lot of information in it, a lot of what we wanted. It's a huge, huge project that you can see. And a feasibility study, you can go for a simple, you know, 90-foot overview, which would be something that you would give back in the comp plan that wouldn't cost you much. Or you can go with something that's going to tell you, look, this is what you need to do with phase one. This is all the moving parts. This is the one that's the priority, and these are the 15 different things that are associated with it. Is, and that's kind of what we've got here, is this more in-depth, really strategic plan. So if we went out for proposals from a consultant, they would come back with something that says, these are the steps. This is what you need to do. These are the players that would be in this portion of the game. And these are the funding mechanisms that you would have to go after. So this, this right in front of you is very detailed. I have sent this out to a couple of engineers that I know across the state to just kind of get their feedback on if they think this is something that is doable, something that maybe their firm could actually do. If we're getting too detailed, if we're not getting detailed enough, just to give me their opinions. And the cost estimate that I kind of am getting back is somewhere around a $200,000 range. Okay? It's a very expensive project. But if you look at all the people that are involved, it's not something that the county would come up with $200,000 to pay for. You're gonna have to get the city of North Platte on board. You're gonna have to get the state of Nebraska on board. You're gonna have to get the, I always say it wrong, Port of the Plains on board, probably Devco, Nebraska Public Power District, all of those people highlighted in yellow at the very top of the page. Village of, Village of Hershey, because it affects all of those individuals, not to mention the whole entire county, but all of those individuals actually have a piece of it that would involve a cost. And so that feasibility study cost could be split between all of these individuals, which would make it, you know, a lot more cost-effective for each one of us. But as Commissioner Brunz said, this is a working document right now. It's not like we're going out to bid tomorrow because do we have the partnership with all of these other individuals? Right now, they, this is probably about the, I mean, they've heard of it, but this is probably about the first time they've heard of us actually wanting to take the next step. So.
So Judy, when you say more detail, are you talking about this map as far as detail as to where the roads are planned to be put? Or?
Actually getting into what I would call the down and dirty. Does this portion of the, the road, does it need to go here? And if it does, what are the factors that are gonna be concerned? Are we going to have to do land acquisition? Are we going to have to do an environmental study? Are we going to have to, you know, what's gonna come out of this? More than likely, there's gonna be environmental studies involved because there are portions of it that possibly go through floodplain. There are portions of it where you have your bridges involved. You're gonna have to have Army Corps of Engineers. So that's kind of the details, not necessarily just the overview of that picture that you have, but is it actually feasible to locate there? And if so, what are the steps to make it happen?
And, and even as important, what are alternatives?
Yes.
This is, the, the document that you see, because I have a feeling I know where your concern is, this is not the, the project.
You knew immediately where my concern was.
It's not necessarily.
This is, this is to give them an idea of the scope that we are looking at.
Thank you for addressing that.
And to back up.
Because I don't feel like there has been enough conversation or any kind of consensus around this table that we, we would all be on board with this specific of a plan.
Right.
Right?
And, and it may come back with, if you ask for this feasibility study, they may say, there's no way you can do that. There's absolutely no way. They may say you have to, you know, route around here. Your better routes go in here. And, and that's what you're kind of looking for.
And vice versa, they may say.
Yes, they may say perfect.
This is the absolute best plan.
Yep.
From a cost standpoint. We don't know. But the feasibility study will needle that out, as well as alternatives for different routes and the benefits and the negatives of those alternatives. But more importantly, we have a rough estimate on cost, and we have a document that we can go to the different stakeholders that are highlighted in yellow on the front page and say, are we, if, if the county moves forward in this, would you be willing to participate for a, a cost share within your jurisdiction in this process? And we can have a meaningful conversation now, I, I believe. And Joe, I'd like, I'd like your feedback on this because you, you contributed quite a bit during this process.
My concern last week, the week before was I need to make sure that we have buy-in, not just verbally, because if it doesn't affect you cost-wise, you're gonna verbally say, I'm all for that. So I think what we try to do is back up and say, okay, we've identified some players. Now, we have to go out, even before we get the study done, are you going to be willing to pay for your share of this study? You, 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 and you? And can we get a partnership to go after this thing? And if we get a consensus or a buy-in or 90% buy-in, that lets us know we're, one of our groups probably stand money-wise on a study. And to Chris's point about, or to your point, Michaela, about the map, hopefully, and if not, we need to do a better job of doing it. This was set out sort of as a first glance, and I think that we need to say that as, you know, maybe it's not state farm, maybe it's Walker, maybe. The other thing that I think is that we prioritize those projects. For example, maybe a four-lane from the new packing plant to the interstate, for example. Maybe that is our, you know, we put some kind of prioritized list along with costs and, and realistic timeframes as to when something might, but it's, but it's going to be a big study. So the first step is to back up, have us get together with these stakeholders in a meeting and say, this is our thought. We're willing to buy in with some dollars.
Joe, when the state endeavors upon an expansion of a highway or whatever, what, how do they go about it? Do they internally do the studies? Or do they, they seek a consultant?
Both, both ways. On big, on big things, they can handle it internally. On small stuff, they do with the DOT, but big stuff, they without question go out to independent contractors.
So we're both in the realm of federal grant money and the highways in general because they're in charge of them. They have to be our, kind of our lead dog, right? In that process? So to your point about the, to the follow-up, are, are they not kind of key to this whole thing as far as putting together a, ascertaining a.
Well, they, they probably already are a step ahead of us on the project. I'm gonna call it the Newbury. Okay? They're, they're a step ahead of us on that, on the rest of it. I don't think they are because this is within the county. There's, none of these are state spurs or anything like that. They're gonna say, oh, well, that's good. Well, we talked about that 20 years ago at the commissioners' meeting. You need it. Well, yeah, you needed that secondary escape route out, but it was never a priority. And so, so no, the state is not. And I, they are, they would be on board with the other part though, already.
Okay. So what am I hearing about what our next step is?
So this was merely, as we had discussion last week, there was desire to have more update on what happened and what a document would look like. I wanted to bring this before everybody. It's just a discussion item. We're gonna go ahead and convene the stakeholders again and just have a conversation now that we have a document that we can show them and kind of an estimate to see if there's buy-in from the other stakeholders before we move forward. There's no dates in this document for, for release and, and return. We have some work to do in this process. It's a massive project. It's gonna take a long time to, a lengthy process, and just making sure that we have all the ducks in the row. But I wanted to get the document, a, a rough draft of the document that we could go and have meaningful conversation, and particularly the work that Judy did, talking with different engineering firms and kind of getting a ballpark for.
And also bring his craft together. You know, I, I had a lot of input, which was about 15 seconds because Judy had already thought of everything and done it. So, I mean, the kudos go right there to Chris.
Yeah. And, and thank you for your work, by the way. And thank you two gentlemen for taking part in that. You also, Jason, for your involvement. Have these stakeholders received this document yet?
Not yet.
Not till you, not till we saw it and made sure this is the way this board wanted to advance.
Okay. So the meeting, next meeting is, as, as I'm hearing it, correct me if I'm wrong, another meeting would be set up with these entities.
The first meeting.
A first meeting.
Second.
Second.
Well, no, first, first with all of them, specifically with this.
Document.
Strategy.
With this document. The, the strategy's been discussed in the stakeholder. But we want them to be able to, if there's anything that they want to see in this document, they have an opportunity to provide that. I also wanted to get this, which is why it was in your packets on Friday, for you to review. If there's any questions or comments that this board wanted to see in here, this is an opportunity to, to provide that before we actually bring it forward to other stakeholders.
So in every conversation that we have, financing is always one of our primary concerns. We've, we have had a very tough budget year for every department. So $200,000 to $250,000 is the estimated cost of putting this out for a, for a feasibility study?
It would be paying the consultant once hired. That would probably be their fee.
And so even with, how many parties invited to the conversation?
Five or six.
That's, that's still a sizable sum of money that the county would have to come up for just for the feasibility study, correct?
Well, this is total cost for all parties.
For all parties, yes.
Right, yeah.
So even, even if you divide that by six, if everybody pitches in.
It wouldn't be, because if you look at the project, the county probably has lion's share of the project. I mean, it just does. Okay?
So we'd probably have a lion's share of the cost.
And we were also careful in not using, that we used the word multimodal, okay? Because, Chris, I'll have you address this. I was very specific. And thank you for. Because, Chris, I'll have you address this, I was very specific, and thank you for acknowledging that, because we, an intermodal came up, and I, my understanding was that this study only went around and stopped at Highway 30 going into the rail part. But I was thinking that because of language or something you'd mentioned on the, your document, I'm not sure what it was, you would know it better than I, that it referred to inside. So I said, as far as, I would be adamant myself, it's the county, that I would have nothing to do with any kind of funding once it crossed into that, that crossed that fence went into the Port of the Plains.
Which is-
And so they were careful to delineate that so that that entity would take that study, or whatever part of that study involves and those costs, and they would handle that themselves, correct, Christopher?
Correct, yes. I mean, there's defined jurisdictions. I mean, the village of Hershey would have its own jurisdictional boundaries of things that, they'd have some cost share in there, the Port of the Plains, anything, particularly with multimodal, possible transloading facility, any, any infrastructure that would be in their district, they would be responsible for that, for that percentage of the share. There's, again, a lot of different things here. There's aspects that are within the city's jurisdiction, so NPPD, we're looking at, there's a potential bridge crossing a canal. There's a lot of different stakeholders that would have to be involved, and they would all have their share, but to Joe's point, yes, the county would have a huge portion of this, and that is something that, once we have more concrete numbers, this board would have to decide if we have the appetite to move forward and-
But just, just recognizing now that when we look at the scope of the project, a large part would be the county's, and we recognize that.
And do we have a plan on, I mean, do we have an idea of where that funding would come from?
Well, I was thinking District 3. I just, I'm just throwing that out.
We're kind of broke already.
Okay, we've, we've had the input. Jason, you were also part of this process. Any, any input that you want to add to this?
Um, Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Superintendent.
I'm not going to answer that question.
No, I think everybody's spot on, but the shareholders needing to come together to make this happen. I think the only thing, I guess I wanted to mention was just coordination with our comp plan update as far as the transportation side of it goes, too. I think that's pretty important, that we're just in coordination there and working in the same direction. We don't have two different people going two different directions, so.
Okay.
Might just be good to bring them into the conversation as well as we go through process here.
Okay, we had a break there. I wanted to get you, you had a question in front of the board.
Yes, if we had an idea where the, where the funding would come, just for the initial feasibility study.
All these entities, I don't know, I don't know where your portion would come from.
Could I ask the question, are there, is there, or are there grant opportunities to cover that?
There is a possibility, yeah. There's a lot of planning grants that you can apply for. The city's applied for several at the federal level. Those will come again, probably in January, February, March is usually when they start again for the next year. But yeah, there's possibility of getting grants.
Is that something that you can help us with that, or is that something we need to look at West Central for their assistance?
Both, probably, however you guys want to do it.
Okay.
Super. We could, we still got a little ARPA funds to maybe play with if we have to cough up a bigger piece of it. I'm also wondering out loud if, once the Port of the Plains gets their initial pot of money, if they can contribute, submit substantially perhaps to the suit, because it all impacts them. I mean, that's just what it's all about.
Yeah, they might be more willing to give a little bit more, because honestly-
At the end of the day, that's why we're looking at this.
One of the reasons, definitely.
I mean, otherwise, we wouldn't be worried about-
Wouldn't worry so much about the truck routes, yeah.
Okay.
We'd be, we'd be focused on Newbury only, essentially.
Okay. Is there any other input? Chris, do you have anything else to add about your meeting? You, Judy, will you be setting up this next stakeholders' meeting? Chris, you're kind of leading that discussion. Do you want to set up that next stakeholder meeting?
I think between our committee that we had, we can absolutely handle getting that set up.
Okay, this is the ad hoc committee, you and Joe.
Jason and Judy.
Jason and Judy, okay. Jason, Judy, Joe, Chris, you're the odd man out, you're the leader, I guess. Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
We'll just, we go out to Betty Clay anyway, so that will work out there.
The J team.
Okay, is there need for a closed session, sir?
No.
Thank you. Here are concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives. Well, don't hear anything right now, we can come back to that if need be. I guess next item would be Lincoln County Commissioners Committee reports. Anyone have anything to add that we haven't already discussed today?
I really don't think I have any.
Heard from the ad hoc committee.
Be meeting with the Senator and with developmental disability people, and I think Wednesday to get some potential help from the Senator, which he's really helpful with, so.
Okay. Anything else?
I would like to remind everyone that today is the probation building's open house from 2:00 to 4:00 this afternoon, I believe.
What do you do?
Yes, and I had an opportunity to attend the governor's tailgate party on Saturday, and I had a brief conversation with the governor and with Senator Brewer on our veteran service officers' request to update state statute to make it more user-friendly for the county VSOs, and they had some very positive feedback for me, so I'm extremely hopeful that Senator Brewer is going to pick it up and prioritize it and help us get that accomplished, so.
Super.
Senator Jacobson kind of coordinated that get-together for me, so I certainly appreciate his support and involvement in this.
We will remain in session for a bit while we work through these, the rest of these claims, some of those department heads, or elected officials.
I had a couple of things. Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Superintendent, again.
Just a couple of things. We do have a, I got a couple of meetings scheduled, starting to work on our asphalt overlay project, going out to bid, so probably have some, coming to the board with that for setting a date here, hopefully pretty soon. And then also, we do have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. in this room for the Tallgrass project out there, just to discuss their impact to the county roads down there, so I didn't know if either one of the roads committee members wanted to come to that, or anyone else. Tomorrow at 10:00 a.m.
Let me check real quick.
Is that correct, Tammy?
Yes.
I'm not sure that's going to-
Officer Tyler, when to come?
I don't have anything until 5:30, so I can, I can attend if you'd like me to.
Okay, do that, please.
Okay.
And this is for those structures that they're-
Yeah.
There's two structures they're going to be building. One of them is out, south, east of town, southeast of town.
Yes, and I, I think one of them is actually right off of state highway access, so I really don't think there's going to be anything pertaining to the county roads there. It's just going to be the, the one site down there.
Off of Echo Road?
Yeah, down that direction, so, yep. Super. That's all I had.
Your bridge project is moving?
Yes, we are moving along.
Bridge is coming down.
They are demolishing the bridge and starting their fill work on the new bridge and the berm and everything else, so yeah, that's coming along rather nicely. Looks like they're making good progress over there.
They have done a massive amount of fill and grading for the new approach to the new bridge. They're, they're moving along very, very nicely.
We've got some nice weather, let's hope that holds up for several months.
I could get some pictures if anybody wants to.
Good, yeah, perfect. Please keep those coming.
Is Tallgrass looking at a little pumping facility of building, or what?
Yeah, I think they're-
Part of their conversion.
It's like a transfer, yeah.
But isn't it just a small, probably?
Yeah, we had the permit here-
It wasn't much.
Couple months ago, yeah.
Judy, you have anything else for us?
Well, Michaela, can you do this on, like, now?
Sure, now would be good, Tom.
So, do you all remember that grant that we applied? Well, I guess it was a grant that we applied for, that EE CBG. Basically, there was no matching funds. All we needed to do was say, yes, we'll take the money for energy efficiency improvements.
It's a voucher.
About $76,000, yeah, it's a voucher. So they finally came out with what we need to do, and so basically, one of the first things that needs to be done is we have to submit a proposed energy efficiency conservation strategy to the Department of Energy. Basically, there's questions in here, like, what goals do you have to become more energy efficient? What else does it have in here? Does your government have an existing strategy plan for energy efficiency? Just a whole bunch of information that we need to put into a document to get passed and sent to the Department of Energy. So our little group probably needs to get together to go through this document and make sure we get this strategy plan put together that everyone on this board will be okay with. Doesn't have to be crazy, but, yeah, sorry, I keep talking and-
No, you're all right, you're all right. Who was this group you were speaking?
I think it was Michaela, Tammy, myself, Becky.
Kevin from-
Yeah, Kevin from over at the city, that we're all kind of together. And I know originally, we had talked about using it for the emergency management equipment building. New builds really don't count. I'm not sure we're going to get that all put together. So we've been talking about using it for energy efficiency improvements at the county shops.
Yes.
So we've talked to Jason a little bit about what the cost would be for insulation, I don't know, window improvements, I can't remember what else was-
I asked Booker from Building and Grounds to do kind of an assessment on all county-owned buildings, if we had any need in the other place also.
I've got a previous to be that, on that insulation, and I think it was 12 rolls of 4-inch duct tape. There was, let's see, that-
I don't think duct tape counts. I don't think they'll pay for that. But anyway, so I think we do need to get a meeting together. This isn't due until April, but I think-
They did push the deadline, because initially, it was due December 30th.
30th, yeah.
And they pushed it to April because they were focused on disadvantaged communities and tribal communities first.
Yeah, and so I just think that we should probably get that group together and get this document completed and hopefully, you know, at least get it done by first party of January anyway, so.
Well, you know, one thing that I can think of is right offhand is there's a little project that may happen out on the corner as part of this existing thing, a lawsuit, that has tremendous amount to do with energy efficiency. This isn't a new building.
That is, that is correct.
So keep that in mind, guys.
Okay, so who's going to set up this meeting? Who's going to be the-
I can take the lead on that.
Okay, Judy, you be sure that she does, okay?
Perfect.
You bet. Okay.
Thank you.
Jason, it sounds like you might be involved with this, too.
I'm sure he will be.
Yeah, Jason, I think-
She's not scared of you, is she?
Yeah. Jason gets invited to a lot of conversations.
Judy, thank you for all your help.
Thanks, Judy.
Thank you, Judy. I'll talk to you later.
Ma'am, you've been sitting over there for quite some time. I don't know who you are. Do you have something that you'd like to speak to us about?
Nope, I just came to watch Nancy Nelson from Sutherland.
Welcome.
Sutherland, Sutherland has had a very active role in our, in our meetings up late, so.
I might, I might need to get escorted out, I don't know.
Well, I would like to, I don't know what the protocol is, but I wouldn't mind having a few conversations with you, Jen, before you go to Sutherland School, on that, on that resource officer.
Chris is the Sutherland District Commissioner.
Well, but I think it's-
We're the ones that are again.
Oh, you two are the ones that are on the committee.
If you don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with leaving, having a brief conversation.
Not at all.
Okay.
You want to have it now?
I don't really, I don't regret it.
Okay, sounds good, sounds good.
I understand, so we will-
What was your name again?
Nancy Nelson.
Nancy Nelson, you gentlemen-
Cypher.
I used to be a Cypher.
Yeah, there you go.
So if you have ever purchased the Cypher Farms products, Nancy's-
I've known her for a long time, it was not Nelson, it was Cypher.
So I will anticipate that-
We'll just hang around for a while.
Okay, sounds good, sounds good. We're so diligently sitting there, I just could not, could not avoid asking you.
Once Chris comes back, we have the three signatures we need if they want to go visit.
We're almost done, aren't we? Yeah, we're getting close.
There might be some-
Won't be long.
Excuse me. If it's okay, Mr. Chairman, I had sent Booker a text message asking about the pump, where we were at with the HVAC pump for the courthouse. He and Joe had had some conversation about what the next step is, and I believe you guys must have come to the conclusion that we need to hire somebody to do a survey, to see if we can put a well in by the Statue of Liberty, is that correct?
I told him before I'm out, but I gave some recommendations to Booker, just so he had some direction, but I-
So Kent, maybe you and I should get together with Booker and continue that conversation as part of the Building and Grounds Committee.
That's fine, I have no reason not to go forward with Joe's suggestion. Didn't have to.
Yeah, but I'm not smart enough to make that, so I just said, there's some people that are no more than I do.
I thought we were talking about doing the pump and dump.
So I thought, no, I think what's-
So is the pump and dump just a temporary solution?
Well-
Well, that wouldn't, hopefully, that wouldn't be temporary. But again, that, I gave Booker some people to talk to that, if you talk to him, I think it would be good.
Just for the record, I, I support a pump and dump. Yeah.
And I thought that's the direction we were going, so that kind of caught me off-guard. guard.
Scarcely. Some of the guys down at Maxwell Shop. Small, old facility. You're...
I don't know if you've ever seen one for that large of an amount, okay?
I don't know, I'm not certain of that.
You and I would both stop by together after the meeting this morning.
When we get done visiting here, I'll make my way over there.
I'll need what to do with this, because I know you've done that before.
I guess Trevor's going to have to be involved in this. I did do this on the jail. We have that, those numbers as per this deal this morning.
Yes.
Estimated, approximate, greatest complaint. So results all changeable first. I think that...
Do we have to wait until that invoice comes across our desk and gets paid though, probably, before we can sign off?
I'd see a title going in there. I would think it would be...
To do it like that?
We paid this last week.
What is it?
That's the last American things for the bridge, remember they come in on, just the same claim, similar.
Does it say payout one?
Yes, we signed that last week.
Yeah. Because Jerry's already signed it.
We signed the payout, but we didn't pay it.
That's right, we signed...
Jason wants to sign, you guys to sign the payouts.
Oh, and then the invoice comes through.
That's the way he wants to do it.
Oh, okay, my bad, thank you.
You were right, you didn't say that last week.
Thanks for clarifying.
See, I do read them.
You do remember, too.
Well, let's just go with that, I do read them sometimes.
Yeah, because Jerry and I had that conversation at the beginning of the meeting, too.
You know, that obviously does not stand what mine stands for, because I just turned mine back into my last NRA National Rightful Association. Oh. What the, what am I going to say to this? What is this thing?
Snakes.
Insurance, insurance.
They use them...
There's just have to be anyone that...
Their construction crew uses them all day, every day, so they are very mild.
They're outlawed.
Oh, that's just something I quit.
I would think we could...
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. Yeah, can you, just because I left this morning on the table, I took my, tried my last NRA, you know. Later, I did the, obviously, I did it there.
See, that's, yeah, that's got to be, that's got to be a...
Oh, Randy Bullish from, does he do monthly?
Yeah.
Transition? Well, you can't buy another one for anywhere near that.
Yeah, for sure.
New?
Oh, my God.
Here?
Yep. These look like the last two, sir.
Good turnout, good turnout.
And then it's just the chairman who is...
Looking out, maybe some sort of gear.
It's not any kind of...
Or maybe...
Well, I don't believe it's... Laptop?
Yeah.
I think it's the way they figure out whether or not they're bonding these...
They're underground.
So once everything's wrapped up, it's still...
Disconnected online.
I understand, of course.
I might, I might come see you again and make sure this stuff works.
Did that, so when they build it, so all of their piping will lead into the storm shore system already, it's underground, nobody knows it. Okay, is there anything else to come before the board? Tyler, do you have anything more for us?
Nope.
Okay, anything else come before the board, commissioners? If not, we will be adjourned.